Item 9E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in an HP landmark district. Has anyone signed up to speak? Silly of me to ask. All right. All right, we have a series of properties here, there's three of them to be exact, and some people have signed up to speak. These properties are, two of them are in Ward 2 and one of them is in Ward 6. I'll ask people to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Good morning, Sandra. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Sandra Vallejo Delgado, 516 Southwest 57th Street.
Okay, and which property are you wanting to speak on?
Well, I bought the property at 2908 Harvey Parkway in 1971, so I'm next door to this dilapidated property at 2900 North Harvey Parkway. I've lived there for many years, and during all the years that I and the owner of the 2900 lived next door to each other, I never knew of him to do any significant maintenance. He was reclusive and never had any extra money or even any real interest in fixing anything. Over the 30 years that, a year, 30 years ago, his health began to deteriorate about the same time that the property began to deteriorate, becoming increasingly a major eyesore in the neighborhood. The house has stood vacant for about five years when he entered a nursing home. So over the years, since I moved next to him in 1971, there were never any major repairs of any kind that I knew of, except an occasional plumbing emergency, and the interior looked much worse than the exterior. Recently, I observed rats around the front porch at 2900 and on November 2nd. Last week, I had a pest control professional treat our house as the current tenants had complained about mice and rats. That's not, not the first time I'd had to have this done. Not only is the house an obvious eyesore to anyone who has to live around it, but there are safety issues as appears ready to fall down. I, along with almost 30 of our neighbors, signed a petition agreeing with the current owners that this structure needs to be demolished. The house at 2900 North Harvey Parkway is by far, in my opinion, in the worst condition of all the houses around the park. I've worked with Mr. Matherley and Ms. Richards since they purchased the property to ensure that the grounds were well-maintained.
When did they purchase the property, do you know?
Two years.
February 2014.
Okay.
About two years ago, almost.
All right.
I think they will make great neighbors. We're real excited about them. So I sincerely hope that the city council will recommend this house be demolished, so a new bungalow house can be built in its place. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sandra.
Morning, Jack.
Morning, and James, you're the property owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I have some exhibits here. I have some, all right. All right, so my name is James Matherley. I'm the property owner at 2900 North Harvey Parkway, and you guys have heard from me before, but I'm an assistant professor at Oklahoma State University. My wife's an architect, and we moved out to Oklahoma about, three years ago, we moved out here in 2012, after many years of living all over the country and all over the world, and finally found a place where we both wanted to be, we both could get good jobs, and we've been really happy here since we moved in. And we spent a few more years searching for a property to buy after we, a place to live in the city after we moved here. And we found Jefferson Park, which is this wonderful neighborhood where we could ride our bikes and walk all over the place, to visit all the cool stuff on Paseo, on 23rd, all this really exciting development there, and we really wanted to be a part of that. So we bought this house at 2900 North Harvey Parkway for a total cost of around $51,000, including all the taxes, legal fees, deeds, everything, and that's all detailed in Exhibit A. This is what we have invested in the property now. When we bought it, we knew the house was in pretty bad shape, and we're the kind of people, when we look at a problem like this, we don't shy away from it, but we do keep all of our options on the table. And so, to find out what we needed to do with this property, we went out and hired a structural engineer, Laurent Massanat, who's here, and he's going to talk about the property later on. And he came out and looked at it, and in his expert opinion, he said, "This house cannot be saved, and it's a threat to public safety." And that's a pretty strong statement about the state of this house, and so, to make sure that we're on the same page here, we went out and brought another structural engineer in and had her look at the house as well, and she had the exact same opinion of this house. All right? And you can see both of their reports in Exhibit B. Because we wanted to ensure that we did our due diligence on this, we went out and got two contractors to look at this house as well, to give us estimates on what, if anything, could be done to save any part of this house. And you can see their estimates in Exhibit C. Those estimates are for close to half a million dollars, or about $265 per square foot. Not only would this be about four times the value of any house sold, the average house sold in Jefferson Park over the last five years, this would put it among the absolute highest prices for houses paid on a per-square-foot basis in Nichols Hills or Heritage Hills. The reason this cost is so high is because, as the engineers told us, this house can't be saved. It can't be saved. All right? And yet, at the last hearing, when we heard about this house, we heard multiple times that we could potentially receive some financial return if we sold our house to, quote, "motivated developers." This is what was said at the last hearing. But I don't really want to see a return on my investment. That's not why I bought this property. I bought this property to live in this neighborhood with my wife and start a family. I want to invest in this neighborhood and be a part of it, and that's why we bought this house.
Okay, James, we've run out of time, but...
I understand. I do want to try and cover this stuff.
Well, it could be that we'll ask you to come back up here. Council could have more questions, so I don't, I don't know if it's the last we've heard from you, but I do need to hear from other people first.
All right. I do want to say really quickly that this house, we bought this house, and they're motivated, these motivated developers are very interested in buying this house. None of them took any time prior to our purchase of this house, as Sandra pointed out, as it decayed over the years, none of them stepped up to do anything about this. During the five years it sat vacant, no one sat anything to do about this house.
Okay.
Until only, once we cleared the title, that was when something was done, this action against the city to try to stop them from taking care of a dilapidated building.
Laurent? I'm having trouble reading the last name.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Massanat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Laurent Massanat. I'm a structural engineer with Obelisk Engineering, principal, and I was hired by Deborah Richards to come and do visual observations of the house.
You were hired by who?
By Deborah.
Okay, thank you. By the homeowner?
By the homeowner.
Okay.
Yes. So I performed the observation, and I'd like to reiterate what I wrote down in my report.
Okay.
Basically, the foundations are, showed many, many cracks in many places. The roof structure has partially collapsed, and in my opinion, needs to be entirely replaced. So we have a house that currently doesn't have a good roof that lets water come in. Water damage over years just keeps getting, making the structure weaker and weaker. We have a poor foundation, a bad roof, and most of the walls that are not in good condition. So I just don't see a viable way to salvage that, that house in this current condition.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Josh Greenhall?
Mayor of Columbus.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Deborah Richards, 2900 North Harvey Parkway. I am an owner of the house. I'm an architect and have worked on many projects throughout the city, and I teach design architecture at the University of Oklahoma. I spent a lot of time in this neighborhood, and we did not buy this house as a monetary investment. We bought it as an investment in a lifestyle and in a community. There's really nowhere else in the city that I would rather live, love the park, the porches, the houses, the people. So I think you guys all have a pretty clear idea of what we discussed last time. The house was in terrible condition when we bought it. We tried to do our due diligence to get reports about the house and see what the state was. And, you know, the city code inspector has brought this case to you. He's an independent party, we don't know him, he's a part of the city, and the reason we're not opposed to this is because we independently also found this information as well.
How many square feet in this property?
1300.
Okay.
And also, you know, there were some people that are opposed to the house, so we decided we should go and speak to all our neighbors and as many as we could. They were all very supportive, and so we realized that actually it's probably just a handful of people that, you know, are in opposition to this. And also, those same people, I was surprised that at the last hearing, there was another house located one block from ours that's also a bungalow house that the Historic Preservation Committee said contributed to the neighborhood, and nobody spoke up to comment on that house. So, you know, I wonder, you know, why that is. Anyways, we are really excited to hopefully move downtown sometime in the near future and be part of this community. Thank you.
All right.
Deborah, could I ask a quick question? You know, has anybody come forward after the last meeting to talk to you about buying the house? I wanted to...
No, no. And we reached out to all the council members to just see if anybody had any comments, because I know that there was discussion of some process or something that might happen after the last meeting, and nothing's happened.
Okay, thank you.
Marva Ellard, 1521 North Chertel Avenue. We talked about this last time, but just briefly, I wanted to thank you all for your patience on 204 Northwest 20th. It's sold at sheriff's sale for $211,000. There was a bidding war on it, and it has a hole in the roof that you could drive a Volkswagen through.
Okay, so you're talking about the third property on the list now?
Yeah, but I just want to tell you that there is great demand for these houses, and sometimes it takes some patience to get the desired result. There are willing buyers for this house. We've been told by Jefferson Park that the owners of this house have, in no uncertain terms, say that they have no interest in selling this house.
Are you talking about the Harvey Parkway house?
2900 Harvey Parkway.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so you object to us tearing down the house, the property we've been spending time with. Can we see a picture of the one on Northwest 20th Street? Marva's brought up here, the third one there. Can you speak to this property, Marva?
Yes, sir. It was, lived in about as, as early as three years ago. It has severe roof damage. It's been unsecured for years. Charles, correct me if I'm wrong on this. It has severe water damage in it. The roof has holes in it. I think it started at 125 at the sheriff's sale and sold for 212, and just waiting for clear title. They have inquired about the need for a certificate of appropriateness for the work that they want to do on it. It's bigger than the house that we're talking about at 2900 Harvey Parkway. Back to 2900 for just a moment. The HP Commission toured that house. There were three architects on the HP Commission. All of them felt that the house was, could be saved. Occasionally, we have problem properties. You all probably remember the four-plex in Crown Heights that Gene Von Stein owned. I came to you then and asked for more time, and I think if anybody's driven by that in the last couple of years. It's beautiful. Brett Swift did a masterful job. One of the issues that bothers me is that the abandoned and dilapidated started June 5th, but the last property maintenance citation was August 17th. So it hasn't worked its way through the property maintenance cycle. It hasn't gone to municipal court yet, and I would hate to see it torn down before it works its way through the property maintenance cycle to see what the court thinks about it, and I would ask that we let it go through that cycle.
Have a seat on the first row there, Marva, in case we need you again. Charles, you want to say anything?
About which one? We really agree with the owners of 29 on Harvey Parkway. It's, it's, the cost of repairing that home is so much greater than the, than what the value would ever be of it. It's, it's in bad shape. The one on 20th, it's got a new owner, so hopefully the new owner will come in and be able to, you know, to fix it. It's probably going to be quite a bit to repair that, too.
The one on 20th Street, Mayor, was deferred.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, I missed that. All right. All right, any comments from council? We've, we've heard from several people. Anyone want to hear, want to hear again from anybody that's spoken? Meg, I'll look for a motion then, and, so, item C is stricken, so the, the, the vote will be on, I would assume, one motion. Ed, are you, there's one of these in Ward 2. Are you okay with that?
Well, no. I, I mean, to me, I don't think we've heard anything new here today. The purpose of the delay was to look for, if there were others that were willing to buy it, and regardless of what you might think it would cost to renovate it, there were clearly at least two interested parties that were willing to buy it and renovate it. If there was a, a neighborhood that could pull it off, it would be this one, that has the city's most successful CHODO program, that's done this over and over and over. And I don't, I personally don't feel ethically like I should get involved in sales of property between two different parties, so I'm, I'm not involved, but just based on what I heard four weeks ago, Mr. Capron of, has run that CHODO program, said he was willing to buy it and renovate it. Dr. Nagel said she was willing to buy it and renovate it. It doesn't sound like the owners are interested in selling it. It doesn't sound like anybody really has taken any steps. That, that was the purpose, to let the process work, as I think you said. Over the last month, it doesn't seem like anything's happened.
Yeah, sure, come on up, James.
You know, we have spoken to Lauren and the JPNA, which is the organization that Lauren Capron works for, and is the CHODO organization, and within the JPNA, we've had this discussion about this house, and the general feeling from JPNA is that they can't possibly pay enough, they cannot afford to buy this house and renovate it. That's the opinion that I've heard from people who work in JPNA. And under the CHODO program, any house that's repaired with CHODO money has a maximum sale price in the city of Oklahoma, the city of $133,000. And considering what we've already had invested in this property, if someone was to buy this property from us, they would, and even come, and make us whole, not even considering possible return on investment from that, they would have very little leeway to do substantial renovations on this house, and the money just doesn't work. The numbers just do not work to try and sell this as a CHODO property. It's not possible.
So, did you have these conversations in the last four weeks with?
Yes, I have.
He sent me, he sent me an email thanking me for the opportunity to move, to get this worked out.
I, I was at the JPNA meeting last month, and Lauren, I spoke to Lauren there, and he did not speak to me about this issue specifically, but he had the opportunity to do so, and in my conversations with other members of JPNA...
You just said that you talked to him about this...
I'm sorry, I spoke to members of the JPNA about this, other members of the JPNA board.
I guess the question I would have, has anybody made you a written offer trying to buy this piece of property?
They never have in the two years we've owned this property.
Not one single written offer?
I've had people say, "Oh, we're very interested," you know, as, you know, people go through the rolls and they say, "Oh, cheap sales on property." They send out postcards. We get those at some frequency. But I've never had anyone come to me and say, "I will buy this property for X amount of dollars."
No one's given you the real estate contract, the standard form that chooses in the state of Oklahoma to make an offer?
No, not once.
Thanks.
I'm not willing to get involved, but I am very confident that somebody would give that contract, and starting with Dr. Nagel, who basically said, when she was here, that she will. And the, the bottom line is, is not, it's about more than just this property. I wish that somebody who wanted to demolish a house in a historic area would just say that. "I bought it to demolish it." But the games and the, and the deception and the, frankly, the dishonesty bothers me.
Excuse me?
I, I'm saying that dishonesty. I think this house was bought, I think that the idea that you would buy a house in a historic neighborhood and not do inspections beforehand, and not do any kind of study beforehand, and then say with a straight face, "After I bought it, I did some, I did some studies, and I found out that it would cost more, and so now I'm going to demolish it." Though, the time to do that in a historic neighborhood is before you buy it, especially if you're an architect and you have an attorney and you're very intelligent and you know, to me, the purpose of this was to buy it in order to demolish it. You got it at a very inexpensive price from a gentleman who's heading to a nursing home or whatever, however you were able to do that. It's across from a park, and to me, the purpose was to demolish it in a historic neighborhood. If I buy a piece of property, I would always do the inspections, especially if I thought there was some structural or foundation problem and that I was going to have to spend money afterwards. I think I would do those inspections before I bought it. And I think the message to people who buy in a historic neighborhood is, you should probably do those inspections and you should probably get a sense of what the, the economics of the property are before you close on the property, not after. Not close and then immediately do a, a couple of studies that then allow you to use the city's demolition process against it in order to demolish a house. The Historic Preservation Commission gave an opinion on this, and they were very clear that they think it should be saved, that they think that we should not be rewarding those who invest in properties with the intent to demolish and clearly allow its condition to deteriorate. There was a hole in the roof that allowed the elements to come in, and, and, and no steps were taken to prevent that. And so, the Historic Preservation Commission was very bothered by that, and they're very clear in their recommendation that we should not be rewarding those, that kind of deception and that kind of allowing things to deteriorate so then it gets to this point. I, I think, I'm not in favor of this. I'm going to vote against it if, if we, if it comes to a vote today. I think Dr. Nagel and others have indicated that they'd be willing to buy it, they would give that contract that you're talking about, and, and it would be up to them to make the economics work. I'm not getting involved in, in what the price of that would be.
Well, I, to respond just very briefly, I would say, I don't think that this narrative that he's constructing about our motives fits with the facts, that we went out to buy this property, knowing that there were problems with it, but we took the steps to try to save this property, and whenever people tell me that a property can't be saved, I listen to them, because they're experts in this and I'm not. And there's no requirement, I've spoken to our attorney who worked in this property, there's no requirement that we were to do inspections before we bought the property. This is not a requirement in the state. And even if, under this possible scenario, that we had done these inspections beforehand, and they said, "No, you can't save this house," what is the expectation then? That we kick the can down the road and leave it for somebody else to ignore, as people had ignored it for years and years and years? This property sat fallow, empty, because of the title issues with it, which we went out and did a ton of work and spent a great, a great expense to try to resolve. We did all this work to try and do something with this property that sat fallow for so many years, and, you know, we've spent two years now with this property. We've been given a direct opportunity by this council for people to solicit offers to us, and we've received none.
Okay.
I just don't see any process that this is going to follow.
I think the question's not, not just what, not what you would do in that situation, but what do we expect others to do beyond just 2900 North Harvey Parkway? You would get the inspections ahead of time, you would figure out that the economics don't work, you could approach the neighborhood and show them, "Hey, the, the economics don't work. What do you, as a neighborhood, think about us demolishing it?" And just be upfront and honest ahead of time that your intent is to demolish it. But the, the question that goes beyond 2900 North Harvey Parkway, 23rd Street is, is, is coming along, it's, the properties are going to get more and more in demand, you're going to have this coming up again and again. This is about more than just 2900 North Harvey Parkway. There has to be a process to buy these properties and then demolish them, and it's not like this.
Yeah. Marva, Marva's being patient there, and she has an opinion, and then it looks like David wants to speak and Pete wants to speak.
To address Councilman Stonecifer's comment, we sent word to the Jefferson Park Neighborhood Association that we knew that, where they were going to be talking to the homeowners, that there were willing buyers, and we got the, the message back that the homeowners, under no circumstances, wanted to sell the house, so we did not submit any contracts because we didn't think that they would even entertain any contracts. We're prepared to submit a contract on it. Back to what Councilman Shad had said, that is a great fear and a great concern of ours in historic preservation districts, that people will come in, and in my world, we call this demolition by neglect. People know what they're doing. It's not, you know, no effort has been made to stabilize that house, you know. The rats are these people's rats. They're not the old homeowner's rats. The hole in the roof could have been taken care of. A new roof on this building a year and a half ago would have made a huge difference on the condition of this house. We have experts that say the house is salvageable. I think we have people who are willing to put up money to make sure that the house is saved, but we don't want the HP districts to turn into a tear-down city and start having all kinds of new houses built in them. That's not what, why we wanted the HP districts created. I think you all know this, but your highest rising property values of any neighborhoods in town have been the HP districts over the last several years, and it's because of the ordinance, and it's because people buy these homes and fix them up and save them and make them their homes, and we're very proud of that. And I'm convinced that this house can be saved.
Thanks, Marva. David?
Your Honor, I think this is a perfect example of, of a situation where we are attempting to say that our code enforcement department cannot go into an HP district to make a determination as to dilapidated structures. I didn't know we had exempt areas that could be exempt from our code enforcement department from doing their job. So here we have a situation. The code enforcement has initiated this effort to consider this to be a dilapidated structure that needs to be torn down. The owners agree and want to do this. How can we come in and say, "No, we're not going to allow them"? These two individuals, this is the first time I've heard this situation, but they appear to me to be ideal people to move into this area, an architect who has, I'm sure, great appreciation for historical structures, but in this condition, I'm not a structural engineer, but this looks terrible. It would be silly to try to come in and do the necessary work, including rework in the foundation even, to attempt to save this, and if they're going to build it in a similar style, what's, I just don't understand this. I am totally for moving forward with demolishing this property. Thank you.
Pete?
I, I'm kind of torn about it. I have a great deal of respect for Marva, and Marva says it is, I'm almost kind of like the Cassius Clay comment about if, if I say a mosquito can pull a plow, you need to find a little bitty harness and put it on it, as far as Marva's concerned. I believe what she says. The, the concern is, though, that I, I feel like, Ed, you've been a little harsh with this guy in this regard. If he hadn't have bought the house, it'd still be there, sitting just like it is. He just happened to be the guy that bought it. What would we be doing if he hadn't have bought it? Would we have, be having this same argument? Would this, the fact that he bought it to build another house there be relevant? Would that, would that be part of what we're talking about? I don't think it would be. I, I, you know, houses get to the point where you can't fix them, and, and this one, again, I respect what Marva has to say about whether you can fix it or not, but it's always a function of money. If you put $200,000 in a house, it's going to be worth $130,000. That's not very wise, it doesn't seem to me. If it serves the public good, like it did with the Seaborn, like it does with, like it did with the Skirvin and some of the other great restoration things where a lot of public money was involved in it, that's another matter. But there wouldn't be public money, as I understand it, involved in restoring a residence for somebody. There are some examples where infill has been made, not in historic preservation districts, but in certain other areas where they have been a spark that's helped the area. You look along 6th Street, where some of these houses are, where they call... You look along Sixth Street, where some of these houses are, where they call that the cottage district now. There's some beautiful things being built in there, and it's not going to hurt that neighborhood, it doesn't seem to me. If people that have money are willing to step up, I'd be willing to continue it again one more time to see, we're back to this business, will somebody buy it? Well, if somebody's going to buy it, they need to step up. I mean, your folks, Marva, need to step up and say, "This is what, we'll pay for it, and we'll restore it." But I also wonder, what would happen if the house burned down? How would, what would you do then? Would we tear it down and let somebody build something else there, and could they build what they wanted to build there? Or would we not tear it down and force them to use the charred timbers to come up with another house, that it has to look like the last one? The reality of it is that houses get to a point where it's really hard to make economic sense out of doing it. These people didn't let that house. They bought the house in 2014, right? I mean, it already looked like that. It didn't look like that. Maybe, maybe they did buy it with the idea in mind, "If we can't renovate it, we'll tear it down." But there's not, I don't see, that's a, that's an onerous...
Pete, how do you know that the, how do you know that the Jefferson Park Neighborhood Association, which has bought these houses over and over and renovated, wouldn't have done it? They found...
Where are they with a check today? I'd be willing to continue it one more time and ask them to come down here with a check and see if that's a viable option.
So if somebody presents a contract with a check, you'd be willing to save it?
Well, I mean, again, you're, I kind of feel a little bit like you do. We're getting in the process of interfering with public, or personal property rights. That gets to be, but he says there's, nobody has made him a cash offer. Is that fair? Marva says somebody will, and if Marva says it, I believe it. Somebody will. So I'm willing to give it a couple of weeks and let somebody make an offer.
Yeah, but Pete, you don't know how much they're going to offer.
No, I understand. I understand. If they offer $20,000, that makes my argument better.
More poorly, we're not interested in selling the property.
There you go. There's the answer.
Okay, I think then, I think we're going to court then. We just need to vote.
Yeah, let's call the question.
Okay. There are two properties here, as I understand it, 2900 North Harvey Parkway and 2820 North Robinson are still on the list, right? Okay. Have we, have we spent enough time on 2820 North Robinson?
Did anybody sign up to speak, or?
No.
We've spoken with the owner, and they're in the process of giving us a plan to fix the property, and we'll work with them on that.
Okay, we'll leave it on the list.
We can leave it on the list, yes.
Okay. All right.
Remaining on the list, is that what's happening here?
C is not on the list, but B is on the list.
So how, so how do I, so if I...
Do you want to move A separately?
So vote on A separately?
We can do that. You can make a motion on, on B only?
Okay, on B only.
Okay. So we have a motion on item 9E1B. Is there a second on that item? All right, cast your votes. That item passes unanimously. Does anyone want to make a motion on 9E1A, which is the property we spent most of the time talking about today?
I've moved for a second vote that we demolish.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? All right. Now we're voting on item 9E1A. Cast your votes, and it passes 7-2. Thanks, everybody.